Chief of Staff has been working with Districts One and Three, as well as with the City Attorney's Office to bring that draft forward. And so as soon as I see something, I'll forward it to this board to make sure that they're aware of it. But it's top of mind for us and has been all year. And so I apologize for the delays on that. But we know the conversation and we're pushing for something as soon as we get back from the break.
Just a quick comment. I appreciate that thought with the end of Abbott there like that. But you know, I walked down there with my kids today. There's no walkways. There's pass or covered. It's just ghetto trash. It's gross. You know, you don't need to see that. My kids don't need to see that. You don't need to walk through that. Again, when you guys get back in, you know, from recess, it'll be the end of summer, which all that'll die down anyway. So let's hope moving forward, there's also a plan to eliminate that from happening in the future, if not over the full summer. Like I said, it's just, it's just a nuisance. Simple as that. So you know, I appreciate the words, but the words kind of fall on deaf ears when you use it throughout the summer, but nothing's going to even be discussed till the summer is over. So again, as a, you know, a local that uses the beach daily, kind of tough. So.
Point well taken. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Kevin, jump in.
Regarding the street vendor thing, for example, when the vacation rental ordinance came out, it started out as sort of a bullet point, you know, framework that was distributed. Is that something we could look forward to on this? Or do we have to wait until there's like a notice council meeting? You know, a few days out or what's the, do you know what the game plan is on that? I mean, the sooner people I think could get some feedback on it, the better.
Yeah, I mean, I think where we're at is we know where the community is. So we don't want to belabor the point. We know where you all stand on it. We've had input from this group for over a year and a half on the issue. And so I think we're going to try to move forward with that input based on, as well as including that input that we got from the vendors themselves and the other districts or new council members who are new to the issue to move that forward. So I don't know if there will be like this community review. I think we've already gone through that. And I think a lot of people will say we've already expressed ourselves. You all know where we're at. So I hope that we move faster than slower in terms of getting something before council. And my hope is that we'll be able to share language with you as soon as it's public and that'll be fore documented. But you know, as I get information, I will let you know I'm not working on it as a point person. So I will keep the board informed as things come about.
I hear you. I just, you know, we've heard you is not really reassuring to me personally. The sooner we can get something on paper to look at, the better.
I would direct you to the previous ordinance that was put before EDNIR in 2019 because it's going to look pretty, pretty close to that. So if you want to review that and if you have any questions specific to that, I'm happy to relay and be the middle person to answer those questions.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you. And I did have one question in the chat from Susan Booth about the working group being open to the public. I do think some of the meetings are going to be public, but it is a, you know, a structured fact finding mission. So it's not kind of what the town council was last time that there was a public forum. We do want, you know, public participation as much as possible, but we're still working out when we'll have public meetings. Does that about sum it up, Teddy?
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, of course. Cool. So we're going to go ahead and move on to Cole because we're running into now our non-agenda public comment time. So Cole, you have the floor.
Hey folks, thank you for having me. So I'm just going to review some of San Diego's budget wins. So in July 12th, Governor did sign the majority of the state budget along with some trailer bills addressing it. I'm just going to start going right now. So first, since we're in OB, I'm going to be talking about the $8.4 million that were awarded towards the OB Pier. I haven't seen the exact breakdown on how that $8.4 million are going to be allocated towards yet. And then contact my district director on that though. So when I get some more information, I will contact you Andrea. Next, we have more than $100 million that will be allocated towards addressing homelessness over the next two years in the San Diego region. City of San Diego is expected to receive $27.3 million within the first year. We have $50 million that'll be used to support San Diego's pure water project, which will allow us to have a source of recycled water that hopefully gives us a more sustainable water supply. $2.5 million towards renovating the Billie Jean King Tennis Court over at Barnes Tennis Center in Point Loma. There's going to be $1 million allocated towards supporting gun violence. It's a gun violence restraining order program set up by the San Diego City Attorney's Office. $18 million towards supporting the San Vicente Pump Station, which is an energy storage system that allows us to tap into some hydro energy during times where our energy grid is under stress, which we've been seeing a lot recently, given how the heat's been impacting our grid. There's also $35 million that's going to be allocated towards replacing a Scripps Research vessel for Scripps Oceanography. $30 million towards UCSV Hillcrest Medical Center. And then lastly, I want to mention that there's a $30 million allocation towards local government grants to address sea level rise planning. And I also want to make in contact with the environmental staffer up in the Capitol Office to get some more details on that program. Because I know it's something that you're very interested Andrea. Other than that, it's all I have, at least for the local San Diego wins. I'll be posting a list in the chat box below as well as my email. And I'm also open to take any questions if we have the time.
You know, if those funds that can be used to address sea level rise will also be allowed to be allocated to our, I guess, our sewer and drainage systems that are right at the end of the beach there.
The language right now that I'm reading is just very vague. And I reached out to our environmental staffer about this. So hopefully I can give you some more concrete information on that soon.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Senator Atkins' office? Yeah, Laura. You're on mute still.
You can't hear.
Can't hear.
You're still.
It's like in the chat box too. That might be more helpful.
Cole, I would just like to extend a warm happy birthday to your boss Senator Atkins. I know she had a recent birthday and I hope she had a good celebration.
There we go. Cole, I'm sorry. My mute button wasn't working, but thank you, Tony, if you did that. Given the water crisis in California that's happening all over the West, is there any kind of Senate initiative to do seawater reclamation, seawater to pure water, rather than wastewater to water?
So with desalination plants, so far, those are like really, really expensive. Each new plant would cost billions of dollars to construct. So the only investment that we've been seeing so far in this state has been through private companies. Most recently, there's a desalination plant that's currently under review through the State Water Resources Control Board out in Huntington Beach. What I've been seeing more on is investment in water recycling, just because that is a more cost effective alternative.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. I know that a desalinization costs billions of dollars. We were not too long ago in the Orkney Islands in Scotland. It's a tiny, tiny islands and they do all of their desalinization. They have a real different way of doing it. They use wave action to generate the electricity. And have you heard of anything like that? Has anybody looked into that? Or are they just taking the developers' word for it that it costs so much?
I haven't seen any word on it recently, at least with what I've been in tune with. But I could definitely note that. And I'll research more what Orkney Island is doing on having a sustainable water supply. I also know that other countries around the world too use desalination as a source of maintaining water security.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah, of course.
All right. Anyone else for Senator Atkins' office? Okay, great. I'm just, there are a few updates from the mayor's office. I just wanted to first remind everyone about the Homes For All Initiative. Tomorrow, there is a kind of scoping meeting or a presentation of it from noon to two. If you haven't signed up for it yet, I believe that registration link is on our Facebook. We posted it a few days ago. So go ahead and listen in if you have the chance. They don't think it'll last the full two hours, but it is kind of the new blueprint for how the development is going to move forward, which includes shortened community plan update times, have a middle income housing working group to figure out how to incentivize developers to build middle income housing, and then also inclusive affordable housing protection for all communities. Okay, so that's Homes For All. Again, if you want to know more, please sign up for the info session tomorrow. The mayor also wants everyone to know that he's hired a new Director of Homelessness Strategies and Solutions, along with created a whole department towards that. So they are still working hard. Obviously, it's one of our big issues in Ocean Beach. So I guess they've taken Kevin Falconer's homelessness czar one step further and developed a whole department for that. And then also, if any of you are interested in serving on any more boards or commissions, there is a whole new website where you can easily search what boards and commission positions are available and then also go ahead and apply through that website. I will put the link in the chat for that. I think I did it. Nope. I'll put the link in the chat for that as well. So those are the updates from Coda. And then I think a lot of the updates from Rachel's office and Chris Ward's office were the same. You know, we have funding from the pier and all, and if you're every, everything that well, Cole went through. Sorry, I almost called you Reed again. So if anything else is important, I'll go ahead and email that out. So without further ado, we're going to go ahead and move on to non-agenda public comment. Does anyone have a non-agenda public comment? I don't see anyone's hand raised or I didn't see anyone's name in the chat. Yeah, Nancy? And then Helene, you'll be next. And please, yeah, two minutes.
This is just a public question and it's, I'm just going off the top of my head. So I am, as an older woman, would love to be able to ride my bike, but I'm petrified to ride my bike around OB. And every time I'm in OB, I always think about or wonder why bacon and cable couldn't be one way, each, each one, one way from West Point Loma over to where, you know, they end a little bit past Newport. And I feel like it came up once years ago when I was on the, on the board. And you know, it never, nothing ever happened. And I, I just would like someone to answer, you know, or ask me, you know, bacon's supposed to be our designated bicycle street. And I can't, you know, unless you're young and brave and all that, I can't imagine driving down bacon on my bike all the time. I'm just curious. I just wonder about it all the time. So I'm just asking. You know, Sunset Cliffs Rabbit would still be both ways. And those two would be one way, you know, and then you could have a nice bike path and still have parking. Anyway, I'm just asking, who knows anything about whether that's, why that's not possible?
Thanks, Nancy. Yeah, so we have talked about that, I think, multiple times on the Transportation Committee and kind of batted it around. There is just, you know, some pushback from all the usual sources whenever you want to change something so drastically. I don't think it's fallen off of anyone's mind. We do, are always actually seeking ways to improve bacon and make sure that people do know that it is our bicycle corridor and keep people, you know, off of Sunset Cliffs, off of all the, off of cable where the bus is and all the other dangerous stuff. So if you want to know more and we want to push for that, I would contact Tracy and we can possibly put it on another Transportation Board agenda and continue the advocacy for that.
Great. Thank you.
But it certainly hasn't fallen off our minds. Great. Helene, you are next. Does anyone else want to make a non-agenda public comment after Helene? Okay, Helene, the floor is yours for two minutes.
Just real quick, Andrea, if you haven't already heard from them, I think the design team for the OB Library Expansion was going to reach out to you to do a presentation at an upcoming meeting. So if you need contact info, let me know and I can make sure that you get in touch with each other so you can plan for that.
Yeah, I would love to proactively reach out. Please do, you know, send that to me. It's something that's certainly on top of all of our minds.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
Yeah. Okay, great. So I'm going to close public, non-agenda public comment and we're going to move into our CIP prioritization list. So this, so again, this is the item continued from last month. I know our meeting ran a little bit long. So by the time we got to this, we still had quorum, but a lot of people had fallen off and we all just felt more comfortable now that we had the edited down list and the prioritization, just to give it one last look and then get the approval for it. So that, it was sent out in the minutes. Tracy, do you have them pulled up? Do you want me to copy and paste them or share my screen? Let me see. Okay. Okay, so here is the prioritization list that we whittled down at the last meeting. So for, so we didn't have to have just number, they changed a couple of things in the CIP process this year. So we're able to prioritize things as in more different groups as opposed to just having a number one and a number two. So the most important target, the pier retrofit or replacement, including an addition of a marine education center, wave energy capture, improved bathrooms, extended stairs down to the beach. Another one was the lifeguard police substation tower, including safe and monitored ADA compliant bathrooms. And then the final one, of course, is the library expansion and upgrade. Things we linked, yeah, things we ranked as our third priority is ADA access paths and mats to the shoreline in Dog Beach, in the volleyball courts off Spray Street, and also by the lifeguard tower down maybe on Saratoga. So and something that we have as a fourth is storm drain repair and retrofitting, like my question earlier, to address flooding and sea level rise. And then number five, we had OB rec center improvements. Another number five was our requested park improvements that we went through earlier in the year. And then six was the estuary project that we also saw and approved earlier in the year. That's kind of hit a blockhead. So we wanted to make sure that was supported because I think we all felt, you know, strongly about protecting the animals that were being disturbed and the wildlife that were being disturbed down there. And then the final one that's also a six is rebuild and replace the public access stairs south of the pier up to Niagara and Narragansett Alley. So of course, I will open for more comments and discussion. Any editing?
Just, just to let you know that the things that are in bold are things that Kevin sent me for edits to the minutes. So those are kind of newish things, but they don't really change anything. It's just more explanatory than anything.
Thank you, Tracy. Yeah, so if this is the final list, if everyone feels good. Yeah, Laura.
Unmute. I got it this time. A question about the sixth one. Are you talking about the wooden stairs that are next to the Silver Spray? Or are you talking about the concrete stairs that come down from Narragansett?
The concrete stairs that come down.
No, it's the wood stairs. The concrete stairs are in active CIP, the Narragansett ones. It's, I know there's a lot of different stairs going on over there. It's next to Silver Spray, right on the side of the building.
Okay, actually, they're attached to Silver Spray. Has anybody checked with the owner of Silver Spray? Is that still an easement or?
It's all public property. It's all public right of way right there. So I thought all that.
Okay, it's, I just noticed that it, that those stairs were wooden. They were falling apart. One block away, actually half a block away are the Narragansett stairs, but they're on the other side of that, you know, down where the tide pools are. But these are all blocked off with gates and trash cans and everything. And I didn't know if anybody had talked to either of the landowners on either side.
I have, I do recall Representative from Silver Spray, I believe, and one front, definitely one from the, those little kind of small little condo cottages, yeah, next door to it on the other side. And yes, I wasn't sure what their thoughts were really on that, you know, being used frequently by everyone. And, and I was impressed to hear that they were supportive, at least the people that I had dealt with were supportive of the idea.
Well, there's a fellow named Alan Keebler. There's a fellow named Alan Keebler and he is the owner of the Silver Spray. I mean, I looked this up and I don't think he's heard from anybody. And you have to kind of go through his property to get to those steps. I mean, has anybody really looked this up recently?
It's all public property. So it's, it's, it's not his say. Obviously, if he supports it, that, that's preferable because it certainly does kind of impact, you know, their surrounding of their property, but it's absolutely all public property. And it used to be a public access, I think, about the 90s or so, and it just kind of fell out too far into disrepair and they stopped trying to maintain it.
Okay, I really appreciate that history. I just was surprised to see them attached to his building. I thought, whoa, I didn't know that. Anyway, just thanks for the history, Kevin. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, can, so it says, but it says up to the Niagara Narragansett Alley. I guess I, I thought we were talking about the other stairs and we're just reprioritizing another CIP project that was already going through the process. So if this does get passed, I'm just going to need much more specific location data for that because you do have to put in, you know, just make it as specific as possible with, you know, even longitude and latitude coordinates, if at all possible, there is a square for that.
So if anyone was not clear about that and thought it was something else, then certainly maybe that item should be reconsidered. I'm fully above it, but I want to make sure people know what they're voting on.
Yeah, is everyone? Does everyone know what we're talking about? Can you picture it? Yeah. Okay, great. All right. So Tracy would move to approve the list. Do I have a second? Anthony? All right, Jane, you've been stealing all the seconds today. Spread out the love. Okay. Anthony is the second. And do I have any more discussion on the CIP prioritization list? Okay, great, because it's due Friday. So I'm getting it done tomorrow, obviously. All right. So Tracy, will you just call the rule? Thank you.
Melanie? I don't know if she ever made it. Okay, Chris?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
I say yes. Jane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kevin? Kevin?
Kevin's yes.
Thank you. Craig?
That would be yes.
Richard, did you show up yet? Oh, George?
Yes.
Andrea? Saw your lips move. Yes. Newman? Where'd Newman go? Is Newman still here? Newman, where are you?
I think he may.
I don't know where he is. Oh, he's not in his chair. I'll come back to him. Nicole?
Yes.
Virginia? I see your head nodding up and down. Yes, okay. Newman, where are you? Yes, thumbs up from Newman. All right. I'm like yelling like he's going to be able to hear me in his bathroom. All right. All right, motion passes.
Okay, awesome. Moving along to the next topic is replacing car parking with bicycle parking. So this was tabled from last meeting after we removed it off of the consent agenda. This was something discussed at the Transportation Committee. So it is a code update. And it's not, it's not pertaining to street parking or, you know, general public parking. It's very specifically about business standard parking. So if restaurants or other, I really don't know who else is required to have parking, but restaurants or I guess larger big box stores, if they want to, they can change some of one parking space into two bicycle spaces. It's coming through as a code update, which would be some, I think, code updates get voted on in October. So this would just be throwing our support behind that, that one specific code update. Do I have any discussion? I see Luke with his hand up.
Yes, I did have a public comment to make on this, if that's okay.
Go for it.
Great. So hi, everybody. My name's Luke Kurnall. I live in OB and I wanted to speak in favor of this action item to update the minimum parking requirements to allow for substitution of bike parking for vehicle parking spaces. Important step for helping businesses in OB as well as creating a friendly inviting vibe. Given there's lots of areas in OB with high pedestrian and bike traffic like Newport and Voltaire, you know, if there's a business that thinks there's enough foot and bike traffic that they can support themselves on that, there's no reason they should be forced to then go to the expense of creating additional off-street vehicle parking. And moreover, given that, especially in those commercial areas, driving in OB can get really hectic and congested, anything that makes it more inviting to ride a bike instead of drive a car helps reduce traffic and improve the quality of life for everybody who lives here or visits here. We should definitely approve this and encourage you guys to continue to make changes that will improve the situation for everybody who walks, bikes or skates in OB. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. I always appreciate public comments. Okay. And then from board comments, I do see Virginia with her hand up first. So I'm going to go to Virginia. If anyone else wants to speak on this, you know, raise your hand in your camera or raise your hands in the chat.
I was just thinking, it seems as if you could have more than two spaces for bicycles in the space that a car takes up. How did they decide on only two?
I know. I was saying the same thing earlier today. I honestly don't have the answer for you, Virginia. I'm so sorry. Kevin, I see your hand up.
I think I have the answer to that. So I feel like this has kind of been misrepresented as, hey, we got a parking space here and we want to encourage biking. So let's, you know, paint some lines or put a rack in it instead. I read through the code update and it was very clear that the, this would allow someone to essentially provide a bike rack on public or private property, or even county bike rack that already exists on public property. And in doing so, for every two bikes that accommodates, they can remove one required parking spot, up to 100% of the required parking spots. So what I see out here is this provides a, someone like Luigi's, for example, the ability to obliterate all of the parking so that they can, you know, accommodate more business and more customers and at the expense of everyone around them, including the residences around them that have to now accommodate all these, these people coming in. I'm pretty sure they'll still be serving people that drive to their restaurant. And I'm quite sure, based on the sidewalk cafes, that the restaurants are eager to expand as much possible square footage, no matter what the impact is on parking. You know, they'll find parking somewhere else. Not my problem. I got more tables. I'm good. So that's. So that's, that, I don't see anything in this proposal that restricts or limits how this can be used. It's not like an existing parking spot goes away. It actually, a new development or an add-on would basically remove all the parking requirements, including within the beach impact area and parking impact areas where parking is already an issue. I'm not aware of a lack of bike parking. I, I bike around OB, and I've biked to, you know, up to Point Loma and back. And, and I, I've never had an issue with access to bike parking. So it's, it seems to be more of a developer and business-friendly proposition disguised as a, as a pro-bike proposition. So I, I don't think the board should support this. The board has always been fighting with private developments on lack of parking, and, you know, shared parking agreements and no access at the beach lots, because people are hogging all the space to camp out. And so here we're being asked to promote something that removes parking from businesses. I think it's, it's a pretty wild expectation of our board to promote this. If it, if it passes, so be it. But if anything, the board should be fighting this if it, you know, when it goes to coastal for approval, because it's gonna restrict access if those parking spots now become businesses, a business square footage and dining tables. And where are the people gonna park? Are they gonna, are people taking the bus to, to the bar, to Barbecue House? Are they really? I don't think so. So I, that's gonna impact parking in the public lots and the residential streets and everywhere else. So I, I don't, I'm totally against it.
I agree with Kevin for all the reasons. I agree with Kevin for all the reasons he so aptly stated.
I agree with Kevin for the reasons he stated.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin, for being a voice of reason.
Tracy, your hand is raised, so I'm gonna let Tracy have the floor now. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so, you know, when we saw this at the Transportation Subcommittee, it was presented without knowing some of these additional things that Kevin actually sussed out and was able to find. And at the time, we supported it because it actually sounded like someone who had a private lot could take one spot and put two bike spots in it. And we thought, wow, that's actually kind of a cool idea, right? But what Kevin had found was that this, these new bike spots don't have to even be on their lot. They could be a bike rack, you know, I can't even remember what the distance was, but it was quite a distance away from these, these spots. It could be a bike rack that someone else had installed in, on public land, and they could be claiming those spots as their spots, and now there is no more parking. You know, that space is actually gone. And they can use that space for whatever they want, and they don't really have to put bike lot or bike parking in that space, because there's a, there's a lot or a bike rack, like, you know, down the block. So that was the thing, you know, that Kevin kind of pointed out, that it was, it just, it didn't, it didn't seem right. And if we're going to support it, the only way that I would support it at this point, after hearing and reading that additional code update, is if we made it, if we actually requested that the lot or the space that is being removed must contain bike parking. And that is the only way that I would support this now, because of what I've read.
I was gonna ask, Tracy, I would support that too, if it says must contain and also must be used for bike parking exclusively. You know, not used for a cafe table or something. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt Andrea.
On that point, thinking about the size of a, of a parking space, you ought to be able to put a rack that'll accommodate at least four bicycles in, in a vehicle parking space.
Yeah.
So I would only support this if it required a greater number of bicycles to be parked and only allow a business to eliminate one of their parking spaces for bicycle parking.
I didn't find what zones this may or may not apply to. Andrea mentioned, you know, larger stores with required parking. I don't understand the commercial parking requirements completely, so certainly there may be some that are exempt, but it, it seemed like it kind of applies to, to any of them. The, the question, I guess, then is, is what kind of business even requires parking to begin with? But I don't, I don't know specifically which businesses beyond, say, restaurants, this would, would impact.
Kevin, would you be able to, later on at least, give us maybe a link to that, to those, to that technical information? The code, so we can see it as, as well? I'm interested to read it. Not that I'm not, I'm, I'm relying on your interpretation, and I, and I trust you, so. But it'd be interesting to, to read it as well.
And I'm, I'm really sorry, because I did have that saved on my computer for a long time, and I, I, I think I trashed it, and I don't have a screen grab of it anymore. I don't know if Kevin can send us one, like, really quick, but I don't know if we want to hold up, you know, voting until we get that.
Oh, no, I, I mean, I'm comfortable voting with Kevin's information that he read it, you know?
I can just, I don't have it handy, but I'll, I'll distribute it when I get back home. I'm content just letting this thing die, and if anyone wants to drag it back up based on what they see, then, you know, so be it. I don't think it's a huge rush on it. I hate for people to vote on something if they don't know quite what they're voting on. That's my take.
That was kind of my challenge. I was trying to find information on this. I, I just was, again, and I couldn't find anything. So I think it's helpful if we have that, but I, in cases like this, I would defer to the Transportation Committee. But I think what I'm hearing is, there was unanimous vote for it, but upon further research, including members on that committee, they no longer support the item. So, I mean, I think we have to defer to the, the experts here on the committee. But I, I definitely think it'd be valuable if we all could see the information that you're referring to, Kevin.
Is there a motion on the floor, or? I would move to table this, send it, or send it back to committee if they want to make it more favorable, then they can do that. Otherwise, it's, it's dead to me.
I'll second that.
I've been watching too much Shark Tank. Sorry.
Kevin, what did you, what did you motion again to table until what?
The motion is to send it back to committee for further review.
I'll second that.
All right, I think Kevin, Kevin made the first, and Richard actually made a second.
All right, close the roll.
All right. Hey, Richard, when did you show up?
A couple minutes ago. My apologies for being late. I had to take my 85-year-old mother to dinner tonight.
Oh, that's so sweet. Okay, I just wanted to record your, your time in. Okay.
I feel really bad now. Sorry, guys.
Oh, hi, Melanie. When did you show up?
Just now. Sorry.
It is 6:55. Okay. All right, so the motion on the floor is to send it back to committee for further review. And as the committee chair, I, I support that as well. But, okay, so we're gonna take a vote. Melanie?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Then you will abstain.
Abstain.
Chris?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kevin? Yes, of course.
Yes, and I'll join your committee meeting next time.
I, I would appreciate that, actually. Craig?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
George? George? Thumbs up from George. Andrea?
Yes.
Newman? Nicole?
Yes.
Virginia?
Yes.
All right. It is going back to transpo.
Fantastic. So another transportation item we have, moving on to the next part, is the roundabouts that were proposed in the CIP process. However, you know, it's not really our call to make traffic decisions, but we can, of course, request a traffic study to be done if the board so wishes. A reminder that these were three roundabouts requested down West Point Loma Boulevard, at Abbott, at Cable, and then up at Ebers, Ebers. It was on the other side of Sunset Cliffs, yeah, Ebers. So that's the three that we would request a traffic study. Honestly, I would want to take Cable out of it, because that is the bus route, and I don't know about a bus going around a roundabout, so I think that's a little bit of a ridiculous request, to request a traffic study on something we kind of know that can't be done. So I'm gonna open it to discussion for the rest of the board. Please, again, you know, raise your hand, so we're not just jumping in and talking over one another, or dropping in the chat. Thank you.
Andrea, I'd like to raise my hand and say something.
Okay, Anthony.
If it's, I think your, your directions to us was like a motion to initiate a traffic study, not a motion to approve or deny or review.
Yes, just ask for a traffic study to be done. That's what the Transportation Committee is requesting.
Very good. And I suspect that these traffic studies do come at a cost, but, but at least we'll have some data. I, I, under the, the opinion that I'd like to have a traffic study done, a proper one done, because whether we like the idea of a traffic circle or not, I think a traffic study will definitively answer some technical questions that we have, so we don't have to keep doing this every five or six years. And so I would think that with the data we have, if we get some information and make an informed decision based partially on that, would be very helpful and beneficial to the community, rather than hearing a lot of anecdotal, you know, pros and cons of this, this type of thing, these roundabouts. And that's all I really hear, is just a lot of anecdotal stuff, and nothing that's specific to where we live, today's environment, and the traffic stresses that these things get. So that's my opinion on this. I would like a traffic study.
Thank you, Anthony. Does anyone else? Oh, I see George with his hand up. George?
Yeah, I was just looking at the, the description and the agenda, and it says Eber Street. There's a traffic light at Ebers. So is that a mistype or something?
On West Point Loma, there's no, it's at, it's Voltaire and Ebers, but not West Point Loma and Ebers.
Correct. Okay.
Kevin, I see your hand up.
I, I want to agree with Anthony, but the city did a traffic study on Bacon and said, hey, this is a a great idea to stick a singular roundabout in this one spot amongst all these intersections that back up. So I kind of agree with Tracy that these work better in groups, and they should study it, but I fear that it's, I don't trust the judgment, I guess, of, of these decision-makers based on that singular approval at Bacon. So I, I don't want to be any part of this.
This would be figuring out if multiple ones would work and would actually allow it to be a grouping instead of just the one that is already guaranteed to go in. Virginia, I saw your hand up, didn't I? Yep. Where's yours?
I would, I would ask for a, a traffic study that encompasses that whole length. Then they can give recommendations as to where the roundabouts would best be placed if they study the whole length of road at once.
That's fair. Chris, I see your hand up.
Yeah, and, and kind of on that note, you know, a few months back, we had, I think, two meetings in a row. There were requests from some of our community members to evaluate stop signs on Fraude, which is my district, over on Cape May and Saratoga. And so I'm just wondering, where did we land with that, and that, would that also be part of the transportation study that we're asking for on West Point Loma?
Nope, that's a separate transportation study, and I was actually just in contact. They're about to start doing it. We were just discussing the, the appropriate times of days to be doing those traffic studies. So they do take time. Obviously, we requested it a while ago, but that's separate, and that will be ongoing soon.
Thanks, Andrea. Otherwise, I support, I think, looking at that whole length of West Point Loma, if that's really a desired location for one to three or more roundabouts. I think it makes sense to look at it all. It's not that long, right? So I think that would be my support.
Craig, I see your finger up.
Yep. My, I think this calls for a carefully drafted motion to clear that what we want the parameters of this traffic study to be. I think everybody should put their motion draft in hats on, and if we want to have the focus of the study, the evaluation of roundabouts at all, singular roundabouts versus multiple roundabouts, and the location of multiple roundabouts at which intersection should all be carefully incorporated into the line.
Fair point. Thank you. Tracy?
So most of you know that I'm, I'm not totally in support of the singular roundabout at Bacon and West Point Loma, and I think that it was a terrible idea to just put one single one in that particular intersection. But I am supportive of installing them at Abbott, Bacon, Cable, and Ebers. And actually, I would like to see a roundabout at Sunset Cliffs as well, but that, I wasn't exactly sure if, because that's such a large intersection that gets such highly impacted traffic, I wasn't sure if we could include that in the list. But with Virginia making the suggestion of including the entire stretch of West Point Loma between Abbott and Ebers, I, I would, I would definitely support taking a look at the entire street. I have read some other comments, like on the OB-RAG article, that's talked about our agenda tonight, and some people had suggested, you know, if we don't do one at Sunset Cliffs, and we don't do one at Voltaire and Sunset Cliffs, that the whole roundabout scheme probably wouldn't work very well, because those are the most highly impacted intersections. And without having traffic flow through those intersections, that the roundabouts on West Point Loma would back up, just as like they're backing up now. But what I'd like to say is that it's not necessarily about traffic flow and keeping the traffic moving, to me, if we're gonna do a series of roundabouts. It is about pedestrian safety, creating places where cars have to slow down so that people can progress through the intersections. It is a way of slowing down traffic on West Point. Um it is a way of slowing down traffic on West Point Loma. While they're moving, they're still moving slower because they have to stop and, you know, navigate a traffic circle. Um and West Point Loma is, it's dangerous. I mean, it's it's a it's curved, it's got a lot of blind spots, it's really difficult for people to cross the street. Um, I've had numerous requests for crosswalks at, you know, Ga- Cable, I've had, you know, it it's, it just, it needs to be slowed down and mitigated. Not necessarily, I don't want to speed up West Point Loma. I think it needs to be slowed down, mitigated, and made safer for pedestrians. So I am one hundred percent in favor of asking for a traffic study that will evaluate the entire length of West Point Loma from Abbott to Ebers. And um I don't know, you know, how Craig wants to word that in a wordsmithy way that he has, um but I I I would one hundred percent support that.
Think the, I think you're, I think your first sentence, I think that's what you just said is the first sentence of the motion. That's that sent, that's sentence number one, and then we should specify that the purpose beyond that is to determine at which intersections, if any, um traffic circles should be utilized.
Craig, I have no idea what I said.
What you said is you would support studying the entire length of West Point Loma between Abbott Street and Ebers. So that's the first sentence. And then the second sentence should be, the study should evaluate the placement of roundabouts or traffic circles at various intersections along west, along the described stretch of West Point Loma to determine which intersection would be appropriate for implementation of traffic circles.
To determine.
And if anybody wants to add anything or clarify that, I'm open to a million friendly amendments, so go.
One sec, let me type it out and then.
Yeah, I wanna see what we have, cause I do think I can tighten it up a bit.
Yeah.
I would say to determine which intersection should have roundabouts to benefit the traffic circulation of the
Okay.
area.
Okay, I just typed in something, so.
Let me, I'll just take a pause, I'm gonna read it, and then we'll go from there. Support studying the entire length of West Point Loma Boulevard between Abbott and Ebers and evaluation the placement of TC's at various intersections along the prescribed uh was TC's traffic calming measures, traffic calming measures at various
Traffic circles.
Traffic circles, traffic circles.
Circles, okay. At various intersections along the prescribed stretch of West Point Loma to determine if any intersections will be appropriate. So based on the discussion here, I think we we do either way really want some more traffic calming measures to be installed here. Uh so what if uh we did a motion uh that, you know, due to the increased or the, due to the rate of speed or the danger to pedestrians that is occurring on West Point Loma Boulevard. Uh the Ocean Beach Planning Board supports a traffic study uh going extending the entire length of West Point Loma Boulevard between Abbott and Ebers to evaluate the placement uh for traffic calming measures, including but not limited to traffic circles, uh lit pedestrian crosswalks, et cetera, et cetera. Uh so we can uh so we don't just limit ourselves. So if they come back and say no roundabout, uh we might still get a pedestrian crosswalk.
Do you want to uh?
Use the term roundabouts, not traffic circles.
Okay, it's roundabouts, okay. Use the right term, okay, roundabout instead of traffic circle.
Hey, uh, do you wanna type that out? Cause it was a lot more than what I typed, and you were talking faster than I could type. Yeah, we'll just take a pause while Andrea does it.
Okay, yeah, and if any further discussion, I see uh you know, some people have made comments if they would just wanna reiterate it to the group, cause sometimes when you say it, we hear it a lot better than just a typed comment in the box.
I I would like to suggest um once this study is done, that they give us their recommendation for the bet most beneficial combination of traffic calming measures including possibly roundabouts, crosswalks, et cetera.
So I'm reading some of the, I'm reading some of the chats, and uh so Susan said that Ebers would be um would not be a good solution, cause it's a T-intersection. Um uh I do know that Susan is an engineer, um so she has some skills in this, in this area. But I would still like the city to evaluate the area. We're not actually, you know, asking for uh a roundabout specifically at this point. We're asking for traffic calming measures and to make the West Point Loma intersections um safer. So if a traffic circle is determined to, is gonna work there, then I I think it would be a great idea, as well as like Cable. Um I, I'm pretty sure that buses could do it, but I'm I'm not um a hundred percent. So you know, this is the thing, this, you know, this is the, what we're asking for is we're asking for the city to evaluate the entire stretch of West Point Loma for anything that could make these, this street safer for um pedestrians to cross the street, bicycles to get around, you know, anything, because it is, it's just such a crazy street, and it's so highly trafficked. So um, okay. So Andrea has.
Lots of turns that you can't see around well.
Yeah. So in support of Vision Zero.
Parked on the side of the street.
In support of Vision Zero, the Ocean Beach Planning Board would like to request a traffic study to be done along the length of West Point Loma Boulevard to decide which traffic calming measures would be best, included but not limited to roundabouts, pedestrian crosses, et cetera. I don't know if we wanna say et cetera.
Rowing from Abbott to Ebers there.
Uh pedestrian crosswalks and and other traffic calming devices. Instead of.
Roundabouts, pedestrian cross uh crosswalks.
Yeah, crosswalks.
Other, other, did you say other traffic calming measures?
Yes, and other tra- and other traffic calming measures.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we wanna say et cetera, cause the city can.
I mean, one that just popped into mind was, you know, bumps or lumps like they have in Venice Street. So yes, other traffic calming measures.
Okay, so in support of Vision Zero, the Ocean Beach Planning Board would like to request a traffic study to be done along the length of West Point Loma Boulevard between Abbott and do we wanna put uh just Ebers or do we want Ebers?
Yeah, Ebers. Cause it exits our planning district pretty much.
Yeah. To decide which traffic calming measures would be best, including but not limited to roundabouts, pedestrian crosswalks, and other traffic calming measures. So I'm gonna post that in. That would be a cleaned up version. Let me know what everybody thinks.
I got a question. Who asked for the one at Bacon?
Ha, I uh Jane, somebody that's been on this board for a while might actually have more info on that one. I I believe it was before my time, so I don't know who actually, the board voted on it, right? So it was a I I think it, well.
I think, I think that originated actually with the city.
Oh, really?
That the city came, came up with it. Jane's nodding. I think, I think that's my recollection, is the city the traffic engineering um was the, was the one that suggested that.
I, yeah. On that, I think um our community plan called for some kind of traffic light there. Uh and then when the city reevaluated, they were like, nah, we're doing a roundabout.
Yeah, I was under the assumption that that the planning board was in in uh in support of doing that, and that the city actually came to the planning board at some point and said, hey, do you wanna do this? And you guys all said yes. Um but it sounds to me like it was, um I know in the community plan, it was originally supposed to be a four-way stoplight, and all of a sudden it was a roundabout. And um so it sounds like nobody ever really asked. But anyways, this is now, and that was then, and um we can be proactive here. So does anybody have any um, so I guess Andrea um made the motion, um I would second this motion.
Have a uh an addition, actually. If you could change crosswalk and other traffic to crosswalks or other traffic calming measures.
Oh, yeah. We don't wanna do ands.
Yeah. Thank you. Good catch.
Thank you. Okay. So um I guess I'll take the vote. Are we ready to vote, or is there more discussion? Anybody? Last call. Alright, I'm gonna unraise my hand. Okay. Uh Melanie.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
I vote yes. Jane.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Kevin.
No.
Craig.
Yes.
Richard.
I support this.
George.
Yes.
Andrea, yes, gotcha. Newman. Uh Nicole.
Yes.
Virginia.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Awesome. Okay, guys. Yeah, we, we're moving fast. I I thought there was gonna be way more discussion on CIP things. Um so we can move on to chair announcements. I have a few. So again, the one is, please, uh if you are interested in the new housing proposal from the mayor, sign up for that webinar tomorrow. It should be informational slash, you know, infuriating. Uh but you never know. Uh so that's my one. And the other one is that we will be having a peer working group, like Teddy said, so I will make sure to report back on any progress, and of course, keep the board in the loop uh with any updates and anytime we uh continue to have public scoping meetings. Uh another update I have is that I did manage to get uh our requests for improvements to Eber Street Park agendized at the next Ocean Beach Park and Recreation Board meeting, uh which is tomorrow. So I will be presenting on that and hopefully coming away with a motion uh to support the fence as well as a new water station, so we can get the funding for that and hopefully see that installed in our lifetimes. Uh I feel like I have one more one more thing, but I guess it's escaping me right now. Uh so uh those are all for the chair updates. Do we have any other? Uh do we have a treasures report?
Yes, we do. Um the current bank balance is one thousand seventeen dollars and sixty-four cents. And I want to thank Anthony and um Andrea for all the time they put in helping me wrangle with the city on the whole reimbursement issue. And we should be seeing a check from the city uh to reimburse for last year's expenses in the amount of three hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-five cents, but don't hold your breath.
Thank you for all your hard work, Craig.
Yeah, thanks, Craig. I know it got frustrating, but I'm glad we, you know, pushed through it and put, put the screws to the auditor at the city. Uh Kevin, do you have a Planning Review Committee report?
There will be a PRC meeting in two weeks. Um, I also wanted to mention I, I uh asked the DSD Development Services to start actually applying the correct uh codes in the coastal zone. A lot of their planners are approving stuff that there is not legal here. So um I'm gonna keep uh pushing them on that and uh see if I can make some, some progress on that. It's really annoying that they don't uh follow the correct laws, but uh two weeks, uh be there or be squared.
Uh Kevin, when you do include planning, will you also just copy Randy Wild from this, from the mayor's office on that? I can get you his email if not, because I have spoken to him along with the La Jolla Planning Board before about uh just fully removing the coastal code from the municipal code, so it's completely separate. So you're not looking through all of the different boxes. You just go to the coastal zone code, and that's where it is. Uh so I've mentioned it to Randy before, and just having it fall, following up with him, and I mean, I've had a, I didn't just mention it, we had a whole long meeting about it. Uh so just looping him in as well.
I I will do that, thank you.
Okay, so Tracy, do we have anything from Arts and Culture? Just gonna move down here.
Yes, there's always something from Arts and Culture. What are you talking about? Uh, oh shit. Okay, uh duh, 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 okay. Um, one of the really important things that we're trying to do this year is um, there's a lot of organizations out there who uh may not be a 501(c)(6) or whatever, whatever it is that they need to be. And what we're trying to do right now is we're trying to um get what we're calling fiscal supporters. And what a fiscal supporter or sponsor will do is they are basically the correct uh nonprofit category, category, and they can kind of, they can be the one that applies for the group or for the organization that doesn't have the appropriate category. Or maybe they don't have, you know, the, the management skills or, you know, something like that for it. So we're trying to recruit people to offer their services as a fiscal uh supporter or sponsor. Um, and let's see, the hope is that um we're going to create a reference list for these organizations to seek out um assistance or fiscal support, um or fiscal sponsorship. Um so what we're doing right now is we're asking for anybody who's interested to fill out a um RFI or a request for interest, and the city, the the commission will keep people on record if you qualify to be a fiscal uh sponsor. Um but what that does is it encourages more nonprofit organizations to consider like alternate ways of supporting the arts other than um, you know, just giving money to people and stuff. So it's basically helping smaller organizations achieve getting the grants that the city has limitations on. So it kinda breaks down those barriers a little bit more. Um, I will post all of the information that people would need and all of the um kind of the stipulations and, you know, things about like you don't need to be a arts and culture nonprofit to be a fiscal sponsor. You can be any organization who's willing to to help out orga- uh smaller arts and culture organizations. So I'll just post that in the chat. Um also, I wanted to let everybody know that the San Diego and Tijuana region are semifinalists for the 2024 World Design Capital Bid, which um has been kind of making some news, so some of you may know about it and some may not. But uh the World Design Capital is designated every two years by the World Design Organization, and it recognizes cities for their effective use of design to drive economic, social, cultural, and environmental development. So the designated city would showcase best practices and sustain, sustainable design-led urban policy and innovation that improves the quality of life. So we are one of two. I think I, I think the other one was Germany or somewhere in Germany. I can't exactly remember where, but it would be a, a group or a co-supported thing between San Diego and Tijuana, the Tijuana region. So I think that that makes it really interesting because it's not just one city, it's a region. And I believe that the judges are gonna be here either this month or next month to kind of make that determination. So it's kind of exciting. So I will put all of that information in the chat and if anybody has any further questions, they can reach out to me.
Thank you, Tracy. Moving on down, I see the Geronskis, is there anything from the Historical Society? Any updates?
We still have no place to do presentations. Water's Edge. Water's Edge is not open to us at this point, so we are still doing virtual presentations. Although we did with Richard Carrico, we did do a tour last month of Sarah. Of the Sarah Museum and the grounds.
For the Presidio.
For the, for the San Diego Original Presidio. So, and it was very, it was pretty well attended. We had forty people or so. And it was a very nice presentation. So we are hoping soon. I don't know when that would be, that we have a place to do, to go back to our monthly presentations. Can't imagine what it's gonna be.
Yeah, well, we all know with the Delta variant going around, it might change. But with that, that actually reminded me of my third update. So per, I guess the city, everything is going to be reopened on, in September. So we are going to, I think, be required to hold an in-person meeting in September if nothing changes. So that's my final update. Depending on where it will be, the rec center is only open until eight PM, I believe, right now. So I guess it would be dependent on the agenda and then where we can hold it. So that's my final update. Do I see, Virginia, do you have any forestry updates?
I'm sure. I was at the meeting for the San Diego Regional Urban Forest Council today. They meet once every two months. And there was a presentation on the new focus, which will be encouraging residents to plant trees on the private property, no longer the street trees, but planting within the confines of their property and that there's a lot more potential there to increase the tree canopy of the city and try and get a little bit closer to what the lofty goal that's been set. And they went over the resources that will be presented to help homeowners decide what sort of tree they would want. What is suitable for their location and also the information on how to give it, get the tree off to a good start physically. Planting and pruning and so on, how to judge a, a good quality nursery stock and so. That took a couple of hours, just summing it all up, so it's pretty good.
That would be great information to pass on to our applicants when you do get it. So pass it on to myself and Kevin so we can send it out whenever someone's application package comes in. Thank you, Virginia. Kevin, I see your hand up.
Just had two quick liaison deals. The Ocean Beach Town Council has four vacancies and is actively seeking applications for appointments to those seats. As well as the Mission Bay Park Fund Improvement Fund Oversight Committee, that's a mouthful. They had a presentation from the city on proposed changes to Dusty Roads Park. I was unable to attend or get ahold of that plan, but I will see if I can and distribute that.
Kevin, I, I see, I have seen the plan. I can send it over to you. I believe that the council was requesting that the OB Planning Board be consulted about the plan as well as the Dusty Roads Park Council. So hopefully we'll be seeing a presentation on that as well.
Yeah, great. Well, send me the plan anyways.
While you're unmuted, do you have any updates from CDC or any?
No, we are moving forward into the fundraising process for the OB Veterans Plaza. And so looking for community partners that are interested in donating to the construction of the plaza. And we'll be moving forward with that over the next few months. And hopefully we'll have some great donations coming in. There was a great article in the OBPL Monthly about the project. And we are looking to set up some more fundraising events coming up before the end of the year.
Great, yeah, well, let us know, you know, any of the fundraising events and we'd be happy to let both of our, obviously, we'll, we'll be happy to help drum up support as much as we can for that project. You know, we all want to see improvements there. Does anyone have any final reports, liaison information? Anything they want to share?
I've got one, Andrea. The first attack on the Tracy's good update, that World Design Capital, that's a huge deal. I was able to play a little role in crafting a letter of support with the airport, but if we get that, that's a big deal on Tracy. I didn't know that we were one of only two finalists, so fingers crossed. Super quickly, there's an opportunity to work on my team at the airport with the arts program. We're conducting a local, statewide, national and international search for airport public art manager. I'll throw the information in the text, but if you know folks who've got some good experience in permanent public art, we'd love to learn about who they are. And it's a great team to work on. We've got a lot of work obviously coming our way with the new terminal and about six public art contracts, five years each, so a lot to keep the new person busy. So share it with those you see fit. Thank you.
Awesome, thanks, Chris. Any final thoughts, words? Otherwise, I'm gonna let us go early. No kicks in the shin for me, yeah. All right, great, thanks everyone. I am copying this, Chris, this is great. I do have some people that I think I'll send it to. So cool. Thank you all again. I will see you in September.